Okay, we're now unmuted.
All right, well, happy Tuesday, March 25th, and we're gonna kick off the Easton School District Board meeting, and we'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, so we will start off just to see if there's any public comment that has come in, or sorry, first we'll see if there's any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda.
I have not been contacted by anybody about an addition, change to the agenda.
Okay, perfect. All right, and we do not have anyone in attendance in the audience who is here for that either, so we can go ahead and jump to from public comments, since there's nobody here with that, oh wait, sorry, we were just doing additions. Is there anyone, any public comment that's been received?
I have not been contacted by anyone wanting to make a statement to the board. I would however like to welcome our two student directors, Angela Booker Walter and Erin Brown, to be part of the Easton School Board, so thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we're super excited to have both of you joining as much as you can, and it's great that Erin is jumping in with using Zoom to participate, and Angela's here personally, so there's also some resources for you guys as well around doing, just being a student director, like some Washington State stuff and something, so hopefully we can get you some resources too.
I didn't want to overwhelm them at the first meeting, so we met last week and kind of explained the process, we got them logged into Boredocs, but I was soon certain sharing them, all the good acronyms that we've worked with and all those good things that we have an education.
Yes, very nice. But main thing is, feel welcome, feel free to, you know, like speak up and represent. So on to section five, consent agenda review. We have in the consent agenda two meeting minutes, so the one from January 28th and the one from February 25th. Does anybody see any updates that were needed for either of those?
Make a motion to approve both.
Okay. Okay, all in paper on approving the board meeting. All right, and then for the rest of the consent agenda, is there anything else that you want to add on?
No, there was lots of general fund warrants, because we missed the cutoff last month, so that's why it's there's a significant amount this month, but nothing really out of the ordinary, just our normal, normal bills. The one I would call attention to is the Easton Trust warrant, we did buy some new library books for students here, so that's probably the only one that's a little bit out of the ordinary, everything else pretty regular. Motion to pay the bills and pay the people.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah.
You.
All right, and then for the, the student directors, you guys are also voting in on these, and just since we're on Zoom, if you can, you know, like show your hands with being in, or if you were going with a no, give the old thumbs down, but that way the viewers out on Zoom world can, can see what your responses are. All right, on to section six, the financial update report.
Cool.
Nicole, thanks.
So these financials are as of February 2025, and this is our cash graph showing our ending cash at $962,000. And just reminding you, the yellow line is our 20% minimum fund balance policy, so you can see that we're still above the 20%. And then this is our general ledger trial balance, we have one for every fund to show that we tie our system to the county treasurer, and everything looks normal on our GLTV compared to our county treasurer.
Sorry, I'm having some trouble with my trackpad, I'm not able to scroll up or something, there we go.
So yeah, so there's a page for every fund, and we tie to the county treasurer on every fund, so everything's reconciling like it should be. And there's our county treasurer to match the general ledger trial balance, the one you just viewed, show that we do tie and that we do reconcile every month to them.
Trackpad is not behaving, but there we go, seems like there's a little bit of delay. Was there anything out of the ordinary this month, Nicole, that you'd like to?
Nope, everything looks really good and ties to the county treasurer, so once we got up, cleared up all those reconciling issues, it's been pretty smooth sailing. And then this is our budget status report, the one we're required to provide you monthly. This is showing that our ending fund balance is at a 25%, and our fund balance is at $970,000. I want to point out again that these reports are as of February, so that puts us about 50% of the way through the school year. And then I also like to point out that we have received 43% of our budgeted revenues, and we've spent 42% of our budgeted expenditures, which is good since we're 50%.
If you mind turning off your camera, you're kind of cutting out a little bit.
Oh, sorry. I'd just like to point out, okay, I'd just like to point out that our expenditures are at 42%, so that's under where we're yeah, can you not?
Yeah, I think we're having some internet issues here a little bit, so.
Oh, no.
It kind of hit and miss, but if you wouldn't mind repeating what you just went through.
Okay, yeah, so as of February, that puts us at 50% of the way through the school year, and I like to point out that our expenditures are at 42%, we want them to be under the 50%, so that's good, we're still at 42%. We just want to make sure we don't go over the percentage of the way we are through the year, because we wouldn't want to do a budget extension, so we're trending really well in the general fund. And then the next fund is the capital projects fund, if you scroll down. Our ending fund balance in the capital projects fund is $569,000. And our debt service fund doesn't have any activity, that's just where we flow our debt payments through for like our bus. The next fund is our ASB fund, which has a ending fund balance of $28,000. And then the last fund, which buys our yellow school buses, has an ending fund balance of $15,000. Are there any questions?
I don't think the board has any questions, thank you very much, Nicole.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, Nicole.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thanks so much. All right, on to section seven, additional reports. And we can hop to 7.1, the Eastern Strategic Plan Update.
We should have our secondary teacher, Ms. Jessica Lewis, joining us, Jessica, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yep, hear you loud and clear, so.
I'm not gonna turn on my video, so we don't, so we avoid any problems.
You just want to tell me when to move forward or back up slides, I can drive for my end, so no worries.
Okay, cool. So this year, we did a survey, because we're starting to collect data for you guys for the strategic plan. We did a survey using Google, yeah, you can go to the next slide, sorry. We did a survey using Google Forms, the goal is to gather data to create further goals so that we can like plan for the future. The school board can and use data that is accurately representing the community and the students of the school. So this includes parents, staff, school, any, basically it was open to anyone. I do want to point out some of the data has been slightly revised in order to fit this PowerPoint, and there was a couple of data points that we had to throw out, because they were nonsensical data points, did not make sense with what we were trying to do. So you can see that we have a lot of staff members and students who apply, filled out the form along with community members, and then parents, and then we have a little bit of past staff and those retired from Easton. So we have a pretty good overview of the community in terms of who answered the survey. So each of these little slides is like the question and then the data given to it, so a majority of the people who answer were between one to three years they've been at Easton or seven plus years. There's some people who answered four to six, so the data came out a little skewed there, but basically a majority have been here at least one to seven years. You can go to the next slide. A lot of people said that the quality of education at Easton was good, a few said excellent, some said fair, and then 1.9% said poor. Some of those were students that left some interesting comments, some wondering if some of them were a little angry when they left them. This was at the beginning of the school year, so it could have just been tired of being at school. You can scroll to the next one, so the positive points were like personalization, they liked the sports, the quality of big education, the small school environment where they get personalized education, or personalized education is offered, and then also the teachers that were at school, most of them said that they were excellent or enjoyed being around most of them. Next slide. Somebody else that came out of it from improvement, what they rated, why they rated, what they did, as I said, there were limited opportunities because of it's a small school. We also had people point out that music and art options would have made their ratings go up, more sped resources or support for sped, and then student accountability or student responsibility within the school. You can go to the next slide. So this is a big amount of data, and I've broken it down in the next slide, but I just wanted you to see how many answers we got in like for what are the three biggest challenges faced by Easton School District? And the, if you scrolled into the next slide, you can see the top three were resources and funding, student engagement, and support staff shortages. So a lot of that had to do with shortage of bus drivers, paras, any extra help around the school. You can do the next slide.
Yep, yep.
If I'm going too fast, please let me know. Students know that, that if I go too fast, they can let me know. And then you have any other challenges would be like academic accountability for athletes, updating it so it reflects our most, our needs of our athletic students and teachers, also more community involvement, support for students and teachers, and a proactive approach to mental health and student well-being, so being a little bit more offering a little bit more resources for mental health or checking in on students with, and providing support for their well-being overall. So treating the entire student, not just the academic version of the student. Here's another big graph, some of it is a little bit repetitive, because they got to put their own answers in, but I thought it was important to see that a lot of the core values, and I've broken it down on the next slide too, is that they wanted more academic excellence, like as the, at the core of Easton, they really want academic excellence, collaboration, student-centered, and inclusivity and equity. So if you scroll to the next slide, you can see those right there were the top three responses of what they wanted Easton to kind of like include as in the future plans. You can go to the next slide, if you guys are ready. And then we put a list of items in for this question, and you like Erin has access to all this data, so if you want to see it in its raw form, you can, but basically it says that like what are the most important to, like what are the most important top three things in the next three years you want to see? So if you scroll to the next slide, I put the top, well, I put more than three, I forgot to edit that, whoops, my bad. The top responses were like class choices, student engagement, enrollment, extracurricular activities, and STEM and reading achievement, those are kind of like the next three, like the next three years, that's what they want to see happen. You can go to the next slide. So the next question was about the future, what would you like to see Easton School do differently or add to the school? And so most of the responses were like adding non-sport extracurricular activities like music, art, clubs, more parent involvement, that came particularly from a lot of student, staff members, class choice, having ability to choose more classes. There was mention of career-driven classes, CIT, C or CTE, as it's more commonly called, I think these days. And then substitute cover for admin, office, and other support careers in school. Someone noted that it's like when someone like in the support staff is gone, we don't have enough support, like someone to cover that spot, so then we lose that support. Some students mentioned more fun field trips, and then others mentioned long-term sustainability of the school. And then I think this is, oh, this is, we're not quite there yet. What are you, what is Easton doing well that you would like to see continue? So a lot of people said that it was fun, they like the small school size, the sports, outdoor ed, they like the clean school and the free meals. Some students said they like teachers and staff, student support, hands-on learning, school safety, and inclusivity. It's been a long day. And then the other ones, areas of growth that people were pointing out were communication and resources building updates. There was some mention of maybe tackling some bowling that has been happening, then staff professional development, career and advanced education preparation, again with the CTE or the AP class, advanced classes, and then parent and community involvement, behavior, academics, or support, so you're seeing some common themes going on here, which you'll see continued, I think, the next two slides, so if you want to scroll. Oh yeah, this is about communication with the district, a lot of people feel that the district does communicate effectively and timely, though there's a good 18% that said no. So maybe getting some more resources out there or making it more obvious were some ideas.
Were those people that were part of the school community already, I think, or do you think?
I'd have to look carefully at the no's, but I think a lot of staff and parents said yes, so I think some of the no's might have come from students. But I can look closer if you like. And then the last question is, what is the best way for the school to communicate with the community? Easton mobile app, email, website, text, Instagram, and Facebook were the top choices. I think that's it. Is there anything you want to look at closer, or you want to know more about, or as I said, Erin, Erin has all the raw data too.
How is academic excellence, how is that defined?
I think that's where somewhere we might want to look closer, there was no I think we defined it as the idea was like improving the overall scores and grades of the school and improving school, like the engagement of students in the classroom. But some people might have taken it as like growth of state scores or stuff like that, so I think we'd have to define that in future conversations about the strategic development plan.
Agreed.
And again, this is our first take of data, so if there's something specific that we want to, you want us to go back and get more data on, we totally can.
We're in really no hurry to get our plan done, it's just, you know, do we feel like we have enough information to set a plan? Absolutely, I mean, there's some really good things that we can pull from this, I think. Yep, you need data. That looks good, thank you. Any other questions for Jessica? With the board's permission, my plan was kind of take this data, pull out, you know, kind of those kernels that we are coming through as themes and present a sample strategic plan, maybe next month or the month after, for you guys to edit, add, delete, and kind of, kind of chew on a little bit, so that's the goal.
Okay, I like it.
Yeah, it's good. Thank you again, Jessica.
Yeah, you're welcome, let me know if you need anything else.
Will do, thank you. Thank you, Jessica.
Yeah, thanks everybody for providing all your feedback as well. All right, on to 7.2, the Eastern Operations Report.
All righty, I'll start with reeking project progress. I continue to work with Peachland Hardware on our making progress. Calculations, the overall expense estimate, looks like it'll be about $39,000 overall, that's including hardware replacement of doors and the course, everything like that. Installing the new course, it's gonna, it's looking like it'll likely be a summer project, because the backorder of the course. However, some of the door hardware for the staff bathrooms, front entry door, closing arms can be accomplished by April or May, so some of that stuff will be coming in, we can accomplish by April or May, but as far as the cores are concerned, we're looking at probably a summer project. May, if you're listening. Probably lately. Fire marshal reinspection went well, everything was repaired. There is a deficiency, however, that he noted that we're overdue on for our sprinkler system. Initially, I thought that was due to the backflow device being repaired, which Central Washington Fire Protection didn't receive the the receipt of repair from Johnson Control, so I'm gonna head and submit that over to him, submit that to the report, the deficiency started, so did some inquiry, worked with Central Washington Fire Protection, trying to figure out what that is. Turns out that we are overdue for a sprinkler systems test, which I thought I completed last year, but that was just the alarm system test with the sprinkler system incorporated. But the sprinkler system test itself is a whole different report that needs to be submitted, so we are overdue with that. I wasn't aware of that at the time, I am aware of it now, so I'm working with Central Washington Fire Protection to get that on schedule sooner rather than later. For our sports field plans, we are working on getting the sports field put in, measured it out, believe it'll work. Looking out there right now, there's some tech in the ground, close to getting it squared off, about four feet off, but I'm getting it down, the field will measure about 100 yards by 40 yards, so we should be able to fit that in there. See, the project, for how I have it planned out, the project will consist of three phases, phase one is removing the shop hook pad, relocating the propane tank behind the bus garage, whether that means moving it or rotating it closer to the bus garage, or moving it to a different location around the bus garage. And then moving a shipping container, aerating the field, leveling and seating the areas where the sport field will be, areas where we need to raise the ground or whatnot will be received. And then getting, you know, the getting how much soil we're gonna need for it and everything like that, getting that square way. Developing a method of irrigation for field, where the actual field is, so there's not going to be hazards of injuries if they step in a hole or the decaf, it's sprinkler or something. Eliminating that, so we have a surface sprinkler system, so we can keep adequate water. Phase two is add padding to necessary areas in the bus garage, existing shipping container and potential parts of fencing. Additionally, adding a cage around propane tank. That's just so we don't have Phase three will be obtaining a scoreboard, whether it's portable scoreboard, getting it installed, obtaining portable bleachers that should complete the project. All of it's likely not going to happen within a year, but if we need the field set up, that would be the biggest part of it, really. It's been a long time since we've had any field athletics here at Easton. By a long time, I think, 60s or later, so if we can get that going, I think that would be an amazing opportunity for students, amazing opportunity for the community, so if anybody's wanting to help out with that, we're open to it, so far Coach Nate, he's reached out to Prograde, they've expressed interest in helping us out with the field. They have heavy equipment, you know, do some heavy lifting and everything, they've already donated to the athletics program, so they're, they're very interested, so hopefully we'll be working with them in the future with help with that, so we are getting support, and hopefully we continue to get some support. Are there any questions with sports field?
Just one thing I want to add, there, Mr. Hickman is going to go to an AD meeting tomorrow and ask the other league schools if there's any interest in looking at soccer, but maybe not, you know, 11-man soccer, 12-man, but looking at eight-person soccer, six-person, like they do with football, so we can get I mean, there's lots of small schools that need to play, and so we're looking at that too, which could potentially be a spring sport, so not just for one sport, but multi, multi sports, multiple sports, excuse me. Be very cool.
Moving on to the asphalt repairs, at the Cross Street parking lot entrance, right out there, yes, thank you, right out, right out here on the east side of the school. There are cones and caution cape out there, that was due to the asphalt raising, the last hard freeze we had, the alligatoring in the asphalt had enough. It raised up, so there was a nice sized pop holder. I've obtained quotes from Patriot Paving LLC, All Aces Paving, and Seal Coating Inc., and Rainier Asphalt Central Paving LLC has not reached out to my inquiry, so I'm assuming they're not interested in a small works project. Project, but I do have I do expect three other estimates to come in, they're motivated to help. Patriot Paving LLC has provided a quote, $12,000. So they're the first ones to provide an estimate, they'd like to provide replacement asphalt in that area, about five inches of asphalt, so it can support the constant use of buses driving vehicles. All Aces Paving, they're looking at about four inches, Rainier Asphalt, they, I met with them today. Um, All Aces Paving, they're looking at about four inches, Rainier Asphalt, they, I met with them today. They're looking at more of three inches. So a lot of things to consider in there, rather than um, just looking at the price tag, what kind of. Quality of repair are we getting with that price tag and then level of experience? What kind of uh. Sublayer are we getting? Do they want to upgrade the gravel to something more than five eighths minus, maybe add some ballast and hard contact underneath there? Uh, so that'll be something that I'll be looking at as far as the estimates when they roll in. Moving on to the transportation report, um, uh, hard copies past uh, maintenance logs have been uploaded to the shared drive. Um, you'll notice that the uh, hard copies only go back to January as because prior to that. Uh, my maintenance logs were included in my productivity report. So I'll have to go through that, make a separate one for those months. Uh, so that way I can upload that. So I'll be working on that to pull those from my productivity report. From the time I started, everybody else. Um, as far as my C E O progress goes. Uh, have passed uh, the uh, pre-trip test and the skills tra- test, still working on the driving test. I'm waiting to hear when I'll be able to do a retest on that. Did not anticipate this being as difficult as it is big, but I accept the challenge and I'm feeling quite competitive with this at this point. I am not ready to give up as long as the board is not ready to give up.
No, appreciate your tenacity and that commitment to it for sure.
Alrighty, excellent. So I will continue with that endeavor.
But once you get it, don't ever let it go.
Yes, sir. Uh, summer uh, Washington State Patrol Vehicle Inspection, um, that's due uh, to occur on April seventh between the hours of eight AM and two PM. Nice wide window. They generally show up um, in the morning time for the Easton. Now I guess it appears that they like to start here. So um, and then uh, I am confident that all the buses will pass. Um, I have the assistance of uh, Help Point uh, Services. Going to help out with us, uh, Mr. Dylan Sayers, who's been answering my own tasks and helping me. Um, so uh, along with Mr. Philip Meehan as well. Um, so I'm confident the buses should pass. There's nothing currently um. Wrong with the buses that would uh, cause uh, any concern. So uh, he's gonna come out, help me check out the buses, make sure everything's copacetic, that we should, uh, we should have a successful inspection there. Uh, continue to look for additional school bus drivers. So far, uh. Uh, interest is very little. We have had one person that was interested in that, unfortunately, yeah, expired driver's license or a. Uh, revoked driver's license. So that's gonna be a hard enough. Yeah, yeah. So very disappointing there, but I continue to put the word out my mouth, uh, put it out there on social media, um, anyway. Um, so if there's any out of the box ideas, um, Mr. Aaron Combo was kind enough to. Uh, order a banner. So we have that hanging up on our fence. So any traffic jams that occur, that we have to see that, the banner. I might add some neon arrows pointing towards the ground and I as well further. But I don't know, fireworks might be in the future. Um, we'll see. Uh, as far as van quotes go, I have reached out Bud Clary Toyota. They are, uh, they do hold state contract. Um, they're currently are the only dealership that I found that has all wheel drive minivans uh, in stock. So some of their used minivans that I was looking at, not on the state contract, just general pricing, we're looking at about forty, forty-five, fifty thousand dollars. With the state contract, um, they only do the state contract with new vehicles, but um, with the state contract, you can see a significant discount on those. So uh, looking at some of the new stock, it's about fifty-four thousand. So the difference between a low mile used and a brand new. Uh, Toyota C N M, set of passenger being with all wheel drive is uh, minimal. So um, I look forward to uh, getting their uh, getting their estimates there. Uh, and they'll be reaching out here uh, within the next couple of weeks.
And we're in pretty desperate need of this vehicle.
Yeah, yes, we are. Uh, the more uh, we get into sports programs and field trips, um, and we endeavor to grow those programs. The higher the need gets, uh, not only for more bus drivers, but as well for that vehicle. We've already run it a couple of times where having that additional vehicle. Would have relieved uh, a lot of pressure. We were able to work it out as we always do, but um, having that additional vehicle makes it that much easier to provide the option for students. Uh, that's all I have for you. I have any questions? Alright.
Alright, up next, seven point three, the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon, for your report. Um, enrollment wise, we are at eighty-six is our head count. Which is a little bit lower than we were last year. Three students less. Still working on, you know, getting the word out, just like with bus drivers, you know, but neon arrows and fireworks. I, I probably will come to the board next month with another proposal to do more social media marketing. To get uh, enrollment up, but uh, like I said, eighty-six down a little bit, but we're still working on increasing our numbers. I would like to say again, thank you to Angela and to Aaron for serving as our student reps for our board members. Appreciate it. And you know, you guys just add any kind of. Reports that uh, you feel like you want. Okay? And there's no pressure, but we're, we're delighted that, that you're here. Ms. Klein and I are working on our master schedule for next year. Taking into account kind of what we saw from the data from our uh, our surveys, you know, we want to offer as many electives as we can with, for our students. Um, we are limited by staffing, of course, but uh, I think we have a, we have a plan to, to make some adjustments for next year. So hoping to get more music into the schedule. And I think uh, Ms. Klein and I have a, a plan to do that. Also looking at uh, Mr. Miley, I think you mentioned last meeting about looking at some C T E classes. So. Uh, I'm working on doing our frameworks uh, for our C T E classes, which I haven't done before. I've always had a C T E director do all that for me. So. I guess I, I'm gonna be doing that with some uh, outside expertise from one of my former interns from Cedar Rowley School District. So. Hopefully, uh, maybe next uh, soon, first semester next year, we can have some classes that are also qualified uh, for C T E career and technical education.
Great.
So we're, we're working on that. Um. We now, uh, we are in the process of bargaining with our teachers union. And that's been going very well. We've exchanged, I think each side has exchanged ten different proposals. So um, we are working on. Uh, working through those proposals and we now have a website where you can see all the proposals from both. The district's point of view and also from E E A's point of view. And they are located right at this link. Or if you go on district, under district on our website, you can see everything there. Again, this is, I guess, in the spirit of transparency.
Yeah.
Uh, we want to make sure everything is out there in, in the open and. At this point, there haven't been any uh, financial proposals because we're still waiting on the state legislature. So right now it's just, just language items and uh, yeah, I think we've met. Uh, twice and we will meet again on Thursday to continue that, that process. So please, if you're interested, uh, it's there for anybody to look at. I've also put this in the newsletter. So our parents and community can, can also see the, the proposals.
Yeah, what they create.
It's really nice.
Uh, reasonable assurance letters. These are letters that will go up to staff that we reasonably assure that we will uh, bring them back next year. Uh, had, also we have, I have not heard of any staff who is planning on leaving Eastern School District, which is great. Uh, so those will be coming out in April uh, to our staff and we do those every year. So it's just more of a procedural thing, but. Board know about that. Um, the legislature is still in session. This week, the House budget came out and Senate budget came out. There are some differences in between those and. I didn't even bother to put those down because there can be so much trading going on behind the scenes that I didn't want to invest a lot of time in it. If you recall, we kind of had, there was three proposals that are, were the big priorities of WASDA, which was. M SOC, material supplies, not ring costs, transportation, special ed. Looks like two of those are dead, so to speak, um, M SOC and transportation and, but there might be some. Um, additional funds for uh, special education, which is great, but um, as you know, the, it's been a very tight budget session. And uh, yeah, we'll see what happens. It's supposed to end at the end of April. Will it end at the end of April? I couldn't tell. Um, I've left some links in there and this, this information here is from our lobbyist that works for E S D one oh five about kind of where we are with things. Not the most promising of legislative sessions. I, I anticipate that K twelve will not be cut. I think we'll kind of maintain, which really means we're cut because of inflation. But other programs are severely getting cut. I got an email today, uh, if you recall, for the last couple of years, we've done outdoor education grant thirty-five, forty thousand. That's kind of on the chopping block. So lots of, lots of things on the chopping block, but we'll, we'll see what happens with that, but. Yeah, this is just more legislative information. Build tracker. And as Jeff was saying earlier, with our increased number of kids in, in, in activities, we are feeling some pressure with. Uh, no fan using kids that are, are classified as homeless that we provide transportation for every day. Um, so we are feeling that pinch. So I think next month we'll bring, bring a proposal for purchasing a, a new school vehicle. But uh, we have now, I just talked with Mr. Hickman, between high school track and starting up middle school track in, on Monday. About twenty-five students involved in track and field. Just started the program last year. This year we have twenty-five kids. So that's awesome. I am, I couldn't, I couldn't be happy with that. Having something for our kids to do, something that's positive and healthy and. I think we're gonna be very good in track and field. Couldn't be happier about that. That is the extent of my report. If there's questions I could answer, I'm happy to. Hopefully at our April meeting, I will have a little bit clearer direction on where the legislature is headed, but right now. I don't think anybody has that crystal ball of where they're going with things, so.
Just disappointing they didn't do the, the levy, that fifty percent.
Yeah, I, I didn't think that was gonna pass, but yeah. Be great, but uh. It's money. So we'll, we'll see what happens in the next uh, upcoming weeks.
Any other questions or comments?
Good, thanks, sir.
You betcha.
Alright, so for the board member report.
Anything I have to report as our guest member dropped your phone?
Hopefully it's okay, carpet issues.
You know, I'm kind of going back to, to the whole planning. Thing as far as getting community involved in.
Do you want those slides?
No, no. You know, I, after school clubs, like what does it take to start an after school club?
Student interest. We tried to do knowledge bowl earlier this year and we just didn't have enough students.
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking more like uh, things like small engine repair, construction or plumbing.
We just gotta have the, the bodies that want to teach the club and the kids that want to be part of it. Absolutely. Our building's open till, we have somebody here now until eight thirty every night. So. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because I always just look at anything that. You could teach a student that it may not be a career prospect, but. Being able to do things on your own and save from having to pay somebody to do it. I mean, equally as good as putting money in your pocket.
Yeah, I wish I knew more about car repair, saving myself.
Yeah, that would be interesting. Kind of ideas.
Yeah, I just kind of spitballing here. Anything else? Angela?
What kind of that?
What about before?
She's already here before school, like Tuesdays for A S D.
What?
I know someone that you're willing to.
You get a lot of interest in that too. Mr. Peter, you might be able to help as well. One of the things that I was chatting with uh, Mr. Mark Alwitz. It was with the photography kids. They have all their drones up and I was like, yeah, we as realtors get charged about a hundred bucks a shoot. It takes fifteen minutes. I just went out and did it myself for one. So being with, teaching these kids how to work through that and. It, I mean, it's a life skill that they'd be able to take and transfer outside. And then he was also talking about getting, looking into a program where they could go and get. This is probably not the correct term, but essentially their pilot's license for these drones.
Yes.
Um, I know that like my photographer that I use, he has his because it's for commercial use. I think I should have it. That's, that's a different story. Um, but I know what it does for them is it gives them. It gives them access to different drones that they're able to use. They can put them up in the sky higher. So that was just something that they would be able to, as students, you guys would get to take that with you after high school and already have that as a quote unquote market skill.
I would just like to correct one thing. We don't have drones. We have quadcopters.
Sorry.
Because if we have drones, that's a whole different level.
Sorry.
We have quadcopters.
We have quadcopters.
My bad. Quadcopter operators.
Yes, they pilots. And them kids come zipping down the halls with those. And I'm like, you guys are good at this. Like you should be doing something with this, so.
Alright.
Alright, um, Aaron Brown, do you have any comments for us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Loud and clear.
Alright, no, there wasn't anything like specifically that I wanted to mention. I just thought everything was good.
Thank you, Aaron.
No, you're welcome.
A little shout out on, on your guys' podcast that you're doing too. Those were, were very fun and looking forward to seeing more of them.
Yeah, thi- this week's edition is actually Aaron and I talking about teenage slang. I, I gave him some good ones from, from back in my day.
Wow, be very interested to see what's on that.
That will be in this week's newsletter.
Oh, and thank you for some amazing newsletters too.
Oh, thank you. Uh, that's, it's hard to remember to keep all the pieces together, but as long as teachers send the pictures and we put them in there. Trying to make it useful for parents. Is somebody helping?
I know, I was just.
Nah, I think, I think maintenance is gonna take a bird's nest.
Oh.
Set up something that I knew that I'm trying to do first. It's my. Yep, it was. Alright. I was pointing out there. Alright. That's it then for our board member report section. We are good to hop into section eight, board business, starting with eight point one. The W I A A board resolution.
This is our annual resolution that we, I asked the board to do so we can continue to be part of W I A A. And their uh, activities, so. Just kind of a cut and paste from last year.
This is something that's gonna be reviewed every year.
And then we submit it to W I A A, so they, they have it as well, so.
We just need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to. Resolution for our W I A A membership.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Alright, and everybody's favorite eight point two, the board policy update section.
I will share that uh. But I think after next month's meeting, we are finally done with the six thousand series. But then we get to go back to the four thousand series because we skipped over those after our audit. So.
Yeah.
We're getting, we're getting close. Uh, we're getting, we're getting close. After the four thousands, we're, we're all caught up. So, um, the proposals are, excuse me, the model policies that I saw in there, really the only two that I thought maybe the board would want to, uh, consider thinking about were sixty-six ninety, which is, um, basically contracting your transportation out to, uh, you know, a company first service, our first student is a company that does transportation. We have no local companies that will do that for us here. Uh, and I think we're too small for, for their business anyway. And sixty-eight ten is an energy conservation program. It's encouraged. It's not, uh, certainly required. So I thought maybe that would be something the board would want to think about. Everything else, you know, either we have, uh, policy in place or it's probably a recommended one that we should, we should do.
I definitely think we should do the energy management, um, pretty much everywhere if existed, except that Easton School has a plan for that. So. That'd be great. I wasn't finding the one about the transportation. Did you say sixty-six ninety?
Sixty-six hundred is transportation overall, but contracted transportation is sixty-six ninety.
Sixty-six ten, we should adopt that. Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, you can see when prior, there wasn't a policy. Yeah, the only ones that kind of gave me pause were sixty-eight ten and sixty-six ninety. Good for us as a, as a district to adopt.
Any thoughts on any of those? For Erin's recommendations?
Yep. So. I make a motion to approve Erin's recommendations.
Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Thank you very much.
Staring names looking at this motion. Alright, next up, we're up to the section nine board discussion. And nine point one, second settlement from Jewel lawsuit.
And Jewel is the e-cigarette company, uh, the vape company that we are part of a class action lawsuit. We have received our second, or we will be receiving our second payment from them, um, for, let's see, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Uh, we should have two more payments coming, but I'm guessing they will decline in, uh, the amount. The first, uh, check, if you recall, last year was about twenty-four hundred dollars. Um, but, so we'll put it in the general fund and we'll go from there. So just wanted to make the board aware of that. Uh, the other two items under board discussion, I just, I put them under board discussion so they're easily, more easily to search down the road. Um, you know, Jeff has already talked about those in his report. Just so we have all the quotes there and, uh, it's a little bit easier to find down the road.
Anybody want to talk about the reclaiming at all? What's Jeff going to do with all that extra space in his pocket? Alright, asphalt repair. Alright, so we are up to, uh, section ten. For the good of the district. And for the good of the district, um, Angela and Erin, you guys haven't been on the board meetings before, but if there's anything that you want to like quickly share, uh, before we kind of sign off for, for the, uh, end of the meeting here. You can cheer, but everybody else can too. Sorry, rambling.
Oh, we're waiting.
Track is fun.
Good.
Okay.
Actually a question with the football field and removing the shop, but then you're going to put another one in or?
Yeah, my plan for that, if I can, I would just like to just relocate the current shop, football field. But, uh, if that proves unsuccessful, like, so, uh, probably at the eastern.
I, I'm just excited. It feels like spring's here, at least for today. Well, I'll take it.
Yeah.
I'd like to share, we have our final J V, uh, excuse me, junior high volleyball match tomorrow night. Girls, I think they've only lost two matches all year and are just doing great. So I can't remember who they're competing against. But if you have time, please come out and support, support the, the kids. They have done a tremendous job this year. So.
How many times that game ended again?
Be at five o'clock. Yep.
I got, I got a whole line of girls who are asking if I have gray hair tomorrow after school.
You're going to be busy.
Yep.
Alright, I didn't know that was in your, uh, your skill set.
Uh, it, they all of a sudden figured out that it was part of my skill set one day when I didn't want to do my hair when I came in.
Well, thank you for getting me, uh, the jags on.
It'll be fun. We'll have, we'll just set up a whole train of them and just get everybody's hair done before the game.
The kids have been great and the, the crowds, the community has really come up to support the girls too. So it's been awesome, awesome to see.
Thanks for supporting Easton and everybody.
Absolutely.
Um, and I just wanted to end, end with it, uh, being that hopefully everybody's been really celebrating, uh, the women out there in their lives because it's Women's History Month. And there's just an incredible amount of women here making this place, uh, what it is. So thanks to everyone who's there and.
All the women in my life are history.
I gotta write that down.
Alright, well, on that note, um, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn. Yeah.
I will second the motion.
Yep, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.